It's 5:00 and we will call the special city council meeting to order. Let the record show that all council members are present. Can I get approval of the agenda? Councilmember Boyd?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Mayor, I'll second that.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Will someone please vote? Motion carries seven to zero. We will now have citizen comments. Citizens, you have four minutes to speak. Counsel, you have one minute to respond if you choose so. Melissa Brown?
Good evening. I'm going to ask for a little bit of leniency because I know this is the citizen comment on the tax rate. It is very difficult to talk about the tax rate without bringing up the budget. I understand that they are two different items, but they're so deeply intertwined, you can't really speak about one without speaking about the other. This year, we are expecting with the proposed tax rate that the budget is built around to bring in an additional $7.2 million in just ad valorem revenue alone. That's it, just from ad valorem revenue. That's not counting all of the additional fee increases, the new fees, and the rate increases that are built into this budget also. We have, there's a revised proposed rate and then the current rate. I'm not sure what the difference is, if there was a different prior proposed rate, that I don't remember what it was. And if so, why was that revised? And what was it revised to? I think that would be important to know where that revision came from. But also keep in mind that whatever you raise the taxes by this year, next year means that there is an even higher levy on them. And I appreciate everything that the council members do. I just want to make sure that we keep in mind to properly present what's happening. There will be a proposed tax rate reduction, but tax bills will go up. If you owned a $200,000 house last year, this year, that same house is worth somewhere around $215,000. So even with the reduced tax rate, you're still going to pay more for it. We can't say a $200,000 house that last year versus this year because now you're talking about apples and oranges. You need to talk about the same house that you own. If you go back to Belcad, see what your valuation was last year, look at it this year, multiply that out by the no new revenue tax rate. That would just bring us in the same budget that we had last year as far as property taxes go. And then see what it is under the proposed rate. And I guarantee you that for anybody who's not at that 65% cap, your rate has, your levy, which you actually paid to the city, is going to increase. This year, the city was able to transfer more money over to governmental CIPs than was even budgeted for any approved budget. That means we brought in more taxes, more fees, more revenue, and we had anticipated. And that's with us having about $4 million in the last quarter of unbudgeted expenses. If we have that much money to have $13 million to transfer over to governmental CIPs and spend $4 to $5 million on unbudgeted items, we are already overtaxing our citizens. It means we are already bringing in a lot more revenue than we need, and we're continuing to take out more and more debt in the form of CO bonds. The GL bond may have been pulled from the ballot, but at least one CO bond for $32 million was already approved, meaning next year, that's going to get added into the tax rate on top of anything else before M&amp;L starts. So anything you can do to bring up a lower tax rate than what's already proposed would be extremely beneficial to your residents. Thank you.
Michael Forino?
I'm sorry, Mayor, just one last question. Would the city manager be answering the question at all about the new proposed tax rate?
We have a presentation coming up that'll answer that.
Okay.
Mr. Forino, I apologize, sir.
When it comes to budget, that's probably one of my weaker areas as far as being able to comb through line items. I will be the first to admit that. But from what I've read in the past couple of days over this budget, what I'm seeing is a lot of mismanagement and a lack of foresight, which I have criticized this council many iterations, time and time again. Lack of foresight, over-the-horizon thinking, to where when we consider budget items, I see a lot of mismanagement and a lot of strange things. I see small offices in the Recreation Department with a quarter million dollars budgeted for...
Mr. Forino, sir, we haven't opened up the public hearing, so we're right now in the citizen comments. You signed up for both of them, so with the public hearing, you can go more in detail about your budget. I do apologize.
Well, based upon that, then, consider memorandum resolution setting preliminary tax rate for FY '24. I mean, this is getting ridiculous. I mean, with the fees added on top. As a disabled veteran and citizen, all the things that I'm entitled to by law, and many of the people probably over my right shoulder with purple hearts are probably in the same category as I am. Whereas taxes that are replaced in name only by fees, that just doesn't make any sense. I'm tired of hearing, "We love the veteran," oh, Fort Cavazos, Fort Hood before that, "love the veteran, love the veteran, love the veteran." Taxes, 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 fees, fees, fees. When do I get to enjoy the benefit that I earned? And I understand that there's veterans up here on the dais right now, but I'm sorry, you don't have the condition and the things that we did by our own efforts, our activities, and our service to where we're supposed to get a break. That's supposed to be our little bit of a thank you. We don't ask it much. We don't walk around town with some sort of special ID card, "Hey, I want a discount for this and a discount for that." How about just letting us enjoy what we have earned? That's not much to ask, and I feel embarrassed to even have to ask for this. But when it comes to preliminary tax rate, where, I'm sorry, but the governor seems to have spoiled somebody's plans along the way in signing the cap when it comes to the $100,000 cap on a house, right? I should be enjoying that benefit. I shouldn't have to feel ashamed and penalized for it, nor should anybody else in this town, whether they're disabled veteran, fixed income, anything like that. That is not how you engender prosperity. I cannot think of any civilization in 6,000 years of recorded history of the human race where any civilization, town, community, group has been taxed into prosperity. Every time it's tried, it fails. So I think that this needs to be put off and rethought because taxing somebody into prosperity is just an impossibility fiscally, scientifically, mathematically. It does not happen. Thank you.
Madam Secretary, public hearing.
PH-23043, hold a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2024 annual budget.
Thank you. Public hearing is open. Melissa Brown. I apologize, Mr. Drake was supposed to come up first. I apologize. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening.
Oh, public hearing closed.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. This is the proposed budget public hearing for FY '24. So for the schedule, we are on the August 1 date for the budget public hearing, and we will also have an action item for setting the proposed tax rate this evening. And then should the council make any changes to the proposed budget, then there'll be a second public hearing on September 5. And then the proposed date for adopting the budget and setting the tax rate will be September 12. So for an overview of the proposed budget, this just shows that the revenues for the general fund are $120 million and the offsetting expenditures are $120 million. And this is a 6% increase over last year. Sorry, I'm trying to get to my notes here. And then the water and sewer fund is $48 million with the offsetting expenditure of $48 million. And then the total budget is $282, and this is a 5% decrease over last year with the overall decrease of 8% for $243.6 million. And the largest reason for decrease is for the ARPA and bond projects, for the capital projects that fell off, that continue to roll until the projects are completed. They won't be included in the '24 budget until we carry those forward. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, do anyone have any questions? Mrs. Drake, there are no questions for you. Public hearing is open. Melissa Brown. You have four minutes.
Thank you. I'd like to start off by saying that it's frustrating. There is a 461-page budget that's out there, and the citizens prior to public hearing got a one-slide review, high-level overview of it. There's been no discussion of having a town hall. There's been no opportunity other than citizen comments that are, the fact that the budget is on the agenda isn't announced until the Friday before the meeting. There's very little chance to review anything or ask any questions, and we get four minutes at a time. So now that I've taken 30 seconds at that time, I just want to go into some of the things that I'm seeing and not seeing at the same time. We don't have many people involved or employed at the golf course, but for some reason, they have 220,000-plus put into office supplies. How is our golf course going through over $220,000 in office supplies a year? Are they actually selling over $100,000 worth of goods in their store? Because the few times that I've been out to our golf course, I have never seen anybody in our pro store. I know that we've outsourced this to a management company, but where's the accountability? Is the city getting financials back from them? Is there an audit of what's going on out there independently from our auditor, from their auditor, anybody? Are there receipts to show that $220,000 of office supplies are being spent at the golf course? I'd also like to know why the city council suddenly has $10,000 in training and travel, which is more than double what it was just two years ago. This year, the council has actually already exceeded their annual budget for training and travel, and I don't know that every council member has had an opportunity to attend at least one event. But when we're talking about cutting back on staff and having to increase fees and taxes because our expected increased expenditures exceed our expected increased revenues, every place that we can cut 10, 25, 100, $200,000 is going to make a difference in the longevity of our city and how well we are able to thrive and provide for our staff and for our citizens. In going through this, some of the areas where I don't see anything, there has been a lot of talk from the city and the city council about needing to take care of our homeless population, but emergency management has nothing in their funding for a cooling or a warming center right now. Legal services have over-doubled and have gone well beyond this year's budgeted amount anyway. And then somehow, we've been without an assistant city manager since the end of May, and our city manager's department and salary has gone over budget. Our city secretary's department budget for salary has doubled, and I understand that we now have a new position in the city secretary's office that we didn't have before. But where is the money coming from? Where is it all accounted for? And as I go through this, I know I'm running out of time. Why do we have so much contract labor in our development department? And why do we have so much contract labor in all of our departments, really? Why aren't we able to do more in-house? And these are questions the council needs to ask and that we deserve answers to. Thank you.
Mr. Forino? Good afternoon, sir. You have four minutes.
Again, when it comes to line items on the budget, that's one of my weaker areas. I will acknowledge that. But I've never been paid for how I look, but more or less what's in here. So I think it's time, and I will call as a citizen, it's time for us to actually have a forensic audit of the city's books. However, many years back, including this one and that, not like the last audit where it was just a managerial audit, and whenever the managerial audit started to, let's just be polite and say, run across some funny things in the budget overall, the auditors were told, "Thank you very much for your service," and everything just went away. I think we call for a forensic audit. I want to know where every red cent in this town that I'm spending and other people to my left and right are spending, we have the right to know. We have never had a complete accounting when it comes to budgets like this. We have solid waste fleet. A lot of their trucks can be guaranteed to break down at any given day that they're on route, break down. For me to try to stop the expansion of this town, I might as well stand at the ocean and tell the tide not to come in. But we have not planned, again, when it comes to foresight and over-the-horizon thinking, we have not planned ahead for this growth. We arrived, but we didn't plan. We have a police department that is understaffed for the amount of people in this town, for the amount of distance of roads that they have to travel, 1,700 miles. As Mayor pointed out, and a fact that I have really latched on to, we are the 19th-largest town in Texas. 1,800 cities in this state, 254 counties, we're at number 19. Most people can rattle off the first 12 off the top of their head. We need to grow and take care of what we have. The solid waste fleet, if you haven't seen what happens when you have garbage stacking up, okay? Growing up in the Northeast, have you ever seen what piles of trash in New York, Philadelphia, Baltimore look like, smell like, and what it does to a community? You haven't lived. We don't have enough in terms of services and infrastructure. I mean, how many years with budgets like this? How long, is Gilmer Street fixed yet? For as long as I can remember, going back 10 years, Gilmer Street is still a bone of contention with a lot of people in the area. That has been on discussion items, budget, and Gilmer Street is still not fixed. We need to start taking care of what we have with the money that we have, rather than think, expand and grow, expand and grow. We need to take care of what we have now. I say again, a forensic audit. Last time, that was a sham. Building on what Ms. Brown had to say, we need to have a true town hall, not like last time, which we were promised to have regular town halls, plural. It was bandied about that we were going to do it maybe quarterly or at least three times a year, where there's going to be a true back and forth, not four minutes of somebody standing up here and talking and then waiting for a response. A true back and forth where we can ask a direct question, get a direct answer, and move on. Keep it dynamic. No stock answers, nothing, "Oh, well, we'll have to get back to you," and phrases like "members of staff," et cetera, et cetera. You folks wanted the jobs, you're sitting up there, so that's also equivalent to the hot seat. We have every right to ask questions and get immediate answers back and forth. And if I had anything general to say, I'm continually disappointed that it's myself and only a few people in this town, 168,000 people, 66,000 registered voters, and we could barely scratch out 2,000 voters come out. I would expect, whether you're for or against, have this be standing room only, people hanging from the rafters, getting up here with questions, concerns, support, whatever. That's part of the problem that needs to get solved, too.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the proposed annual budget before our close public hearing? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Boyd?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's appropriate that we get some answers, some questions answered. The first question I'd like to ask is if it is in fact true, having reviewed this portion of the budget, the $220,000 office expenses with Parks Department, could someone speak to that?
Mrs. Drake? Welcome back.
Can you state the question again?
Sure. It was previously mentioned that Parks Department, the office at golf course, excuse me, had about $220,000 in expenses for office supplies. I'm trying to see where we might be with that.
The golf budget was presented to us by the contractor, and we can get with them and get the details on that and get back with you?
Okay.
Well, I can answer it. No, we don't spend $220,000 on office supplies at the golf course. We do have a Pro Shop. I'm sorry, that was not directed at you.
No, for the public's sake.
Yes, sir, I understand. I apologize. We will get the exact answer, but I'm pretty sure I can tell you that that is the Pro Shop inventory. I'm not 100% sure, but I bet that's what it is. And yes, they do sell a lot out of the Pro Shop. I'm sure that you can go out there any time of the day and find a spot where no one's in there, and then there are other times you can go in and find when there are a lot of people in there. So I'm pretty sure that's what it's going to be, but we will get you an exact answer on that.
We can get a breakdown of the accounting of what is included.
I understand. The other question I had was in regards to the comment about forensic audit. Did the city not recently get an award for, from auditing firm? Could someone speak to that?
We get an award every year for our audit of our financials.
Okay. Yeah, and I remember that was a pretty big day for the council when we heard that information, that our books are solid. So that is something I think the public does need to know. And just for the public's sake, the status of Gilmer Street, could someone just speak quickly about where we are with Gilmer Street?
Sure. Mr. Zager's.
Good evening, counsel, Mayor. For the status of Gilmer Street, we're actually routing the paperwork for bidding the project right now. So it should be advertised hopefully in the next few weeks.
Very good. And thank you for that. And I would just speak to, I heard of another mention of the training and travel. The citizens should know that council members do attend training, and you have to have travel to get there. That's all I got. Thank you.
Councilmember Alvarez? I mean, you don't want to speak? Nope. Okay. Councilmember Adams?
Just want to clarify, we're going to talk about the rate increases on a separate item, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I have anything right now?
Mr. Kegel, you have anything you would like to say?
Just to add, the forensic audit, I wasn't here, but I've seen the results of it. It was because people claimed there are $8 million missing. No money was missing, and I think the city spent somewhere between $400,000 and $500,000 on that forensic audit. It was not just a management audit, it was very detailed. I've seen the results. It's a huge report. So, you know, just to put that out there.
Are there any more questions from counsel? Can I get a motion for PH-23-043? Mayor Protem?
Madam Mayor, I move to set the date of September 12, 2023, to consider adoption of the budget.
Councilmember Solomon? Can I get a second? All in favor, yes. All opposed, no.
I have a, I rang in for a, but it disappeared. I move to amend that to a motion in direction to conduct a town hall prior to that date.
Second.
If we're going to have a town hall prior to September 12, we would need a date to that amendment. So what is the date for the town hall? Time, location?
I guess that would be a motion in direction for staff to set a date and location for that.
So the amendment would be that staff will find a date between now and September 12 and time and location for a town hall meeting?
Yes.
And it was seconded by Councilmember Boyd. Did you get that, Madam Secretary?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All in favor of the amendment, yes. All opposed, no. To the motion? Madam Secretary, six, yes. One in opposition. Mayor Protem called. All in favor of the amendment and the original motion, yes. All opposed, no. Madam Secretary, the motion carries seven to zero. Whenever you're ready, we can do the resolutions.
RS-23120, consider memorandum resolution setting the preliminary tax rate for the FY 2024 annual budget and setting the date to hold a public hearing.
Thank you. Welcome back, Mrs. Drake.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. This is the item for setting the proposed tax rate. So this is not adopting the rate, this is just setting the ceiling so that we can publish the notices and hold a tax rate public hearing, and then you will be able to set the rate at that rate or lower, but you cannot exceed this rate. So for FY '24, the proposed tax rate that was included in the budget was 6208, which is a decrease from our current year rate of 6233 by a quarter of a cent. Our certified roll is $10 billion, 10.1 billion. The exempt value is 3.2 billion, and the tax levy is $65 million. Compared to our peer cities, using their FY '23 adopted tax rates, because we do not have their '24 proposed tax rates yet, you will see that our current year rate is here and what we're proposing for FY '24 is here. So we're kind of in the middle compared to our peer cities, and what we're proposing would actually go down. So here we have a property tax rate description that explains the no new revenue rate, and that's the tax rate that will generate the same amount of tax revenue as the previous fiscal year on properties taxed in both fiscal years. And our no new revenue rate... And our no new revenue rate is 5473. We're budgeted at 6208. Our current year rate is 6233. And then, the voter approval rate, which is the tax rate that's calculated by increasing the no new revenue rate by 3.5% plus any unused increment, is 7075. And if that were to be exceeded, there would be an automatic election. So the property tax levy comparison, as you can see with the proposed rate, this is what we have here at the $64 million. If you were to use the no new revenue rate, we would have to cut $7 million from the budget. If we were to adopt the current rate, we would add money to the budget. And if you were to adopt the voter approval rate, it would add 8.5 million to the budget. So this is a comparison of the tax rate for '24 compared to our current rate, and as you can see, the debt rate is going down, the MNO is going up just a little bit, but the overall rate is going down by a quarter of a cent. So when you compare the average taxable homestead value from last year to what is proposed for '24, the taxable value is, for '24, is $202,000 on an average homestead. Last year, it was $178,000. That's a difference of $23,000 in value. With the proposed tax rate, that means it would increase $11.71 a month on the average And this just shows again the tax rate, our net taxable value, our tax levy, and then our exempted value of $3.2 million. And this shows our exemptions, and as you can see, the disabled veteran exemption is 54%, and the public and religious properties at 41%, and then we have these others here. That's what makes up the $3.2 billion. The DV exemption value, as you can see, has grown to $1.7 million, or $1.7 billion, excuse me. And the estimated loss of revenue on that is $10.9 million. Now, we get $2.73 million from the state is the estimated amount for that for FY24. And then, the revenue loss for the over-65 and disabled frozen value is $969,000. So for the summary of the tax revenue process, this would set the preliminary tax rate, which would set the ceiling, as I explained earlier. The adopted tax rate cannot exceed what you set the rate at today. We would set the tax rate public hearing for September 12th, which would be the same day that you would set the tax rate on September 12th. So your alternatives would be the no new revenue rate, the revised proposed rate, which is the same as what we proposed in the budget of 6208, the current rate of 6233, or the voter approval rate. And our recommendation is to set the preliminary tax rate at 6208. And the next steps would be to set the preliminary tax rate, which requires to take a record vote, and then set the date, time, and place of the tax rate public hearing for September 12th. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Drake. There are no questions for you. Mayor Protem.
Madam Mayor, I move to set the preliminary tax rate at .6208 and to set the date of September the 12th, 2023, for the public hearing on the tax rate to be held at 5:00 PM at 101 North College Street, Colleen, Texas.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Mayor, I'll second that motion.
Madam Secretary, this will take, she will be taking a record vote. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Solomon?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cobb?
Yes.
Councilmember Segarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyd?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. The motion passed seven to zero. My system is down, so I just need a motion, raise your hand to adjourn the meeting. It doesn't work. Councilmember Alvarez?
Who did that?
Councilmember Gonzalez. All in favor, yes. All opposed? No. One, two, three. We have six, yes, and Councilmember Adams did not vote on this item. Meeting adjourned. We'll take a five-minute break. We're taking a five-minute break before we start our next meeting. If you would like to sign up to speak and citizen comments, this is your opportunity.